Mr. Faust, do we have a forum present? Can you tell, sir?
Mayor, I believe we have a full forum.
Full forum being present, then I declare this meeting open. And... Mr. Looney, could I ask you to do an invocation?
Certainly. Father, thank you for the blessing to this day. Help give us the wisdom and knowledge to make good decisions for the citizens of Jasper. Help those that are in need in our community and keep those that need your care in your thoughts. Amen.
Amen. And Mr. Redfield, could I ask you to lead us in our place of allegiance, please, sir?
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you, sir. Captain, you have the agenda in front of you. I would invite a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'm with you.
In a second, please.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. The agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. The motion and agenda is adopted. We have absolutely nothing under our business for this. And under new business, item A is a discussion of 2020 budget amendments. Brandon, if you will bring forward this budget amendment discussion and start us off.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor Council, as this is a work session, it's a special call meeting. I would like to differentiate some of the items that's on the agenda for tonight. Mayor, the one that you just called on, the discussion of the 2020 budget amendments, staff is not seeking any sort of approvals or directions tonight. However, due to the nature of a work session, we thought it would be prudent to bring forward a mid-year packet of information, the 2020 budget amendments, for council and for the public. The relevancy of the 2020 budget amendments is the fact that in the fall of 2019, the 2020 budget, the city operates off of January 1 to December 31, calendar year budget year. It was developed in the fall of 2019. As we move into the 20-year, staff is cognizant of the fact that we have different revenue projections and we've had a pandemic. So that is one of the reasons we wanted to go ahead and amend the budget because it is the correct thing to do in an organization even without a pandemic. But that being said, we do have some more qualified individuals, our interim finance director as well as our deputy finance director on the Zoom meeting for any specific questions. I'm not necessarily prepared to go through line item by line item, but I did hit some of the highlights so that if it does provoke additional questions or comments or additional work for staff to work at between now and the July 13th meeting, it awards us that extra couple of weeks to work towards. So nonetheless, as it turns out, we'll talk a little bit about the revenue. We have seen a pretty, we're projecting rather, projecting that we would have a revenue decline of approximately $180,000 for the 2020 amended budget. Those are estimated projected numbers. We will not go until the end of the fiscal year, calendar year, how we meet certain estimates. We have trended pretty well stable with revenue, but I'm not sure if we've fully recognized the impact of the pandemic. One of the main sources of our general fund budget is the loss, the local option sales tax. We are expected to reduce that amount by about $50,000. Additionally, due to just the nature of building activity, although we've not experienced it thus far, conservatively, we are cutting around $6,000 or so thousand dollars off of that. Actually, we've already hit our projected estimates, but nonetheless, just conservatively, we wanted to prepare our budget for reduction of those revenues. You will also see in your packet, page six of 50, the municipal fines and forfeitures. We are looking at an $80-plus-thousand reduction in that due to a couple of months of not being able to conduct a municipal court and just the nature of social distancing and other measures in place of the lockdown, so to speak. In regards to the hotel motel tax, we do not have allocated a large sum of money for the economic fund, but we do see potential reduction of $10,000 plus or minus in that as revenue. Account for the revenue projections, it will show the need, the expenditures in just a moment. If you have the highlights, it will put the need to utilize about 28.8% of the allowance to help cover the development of 2020 budget. As you may recall, earlier this year, we had conducted a retreat whereupon there were certain measures that we wanted to go ahead and begin implementing. As a matter of fact, we'd already begun the process of partnering with the county for economic development. As such, we entered into a multi-year economic development agreement, which even if the economy or the pandemic is even more prudent to have a professional to be our support and to lean on as things tick back up to help continue to promote this economy at the local level. That was an expense that had not been accounted for in the 2020 budget. We executed that agreement in January, so we have adjusted that line item accordingly. A few other highlights, we'll talk about the playground, but that was a very, I guess, critical component of our community building. We've adjusted in the budget for the additional use of fund balance for the installation of the playground, as well as the best for the police department, as well as the turnout here for the fire department, both of which I think have been very wise and prudent measures taken by this council to go ahead and outfit our public safety personnel with adequate equipment. So we can begin also, and we have had to adjust the budget to assist with some legal fees we've incurred in light of some of the natures of suits and retail items. So we have adjusted our 2020 budget to reflect additional use monies for legal protection, which is even under a normal year, we would look at where we are expenditure-wise and make sure that we're hitting the mark. There are, there were, rather, when Sharon and Lindsay reviewed the budget throughout all departments, there were some slight adjustments that needed to be made to some of the group insurance. We are not exactly sure why maybe they're off, whether it's when it was accrued or how things are going on, but nonetheless, we've adjusted those departments. And when you do have about 70-plus employees, a few dollars here and there spread out over 52 weeks does have some pretty significant implications. And you'll see those reflected in your amended budget as well. We are pursuant to the retreat and the need to just bring out some just 21st century technology. We did include in this budget amendment, the inclusion of purchasing some software for how we do our billing system and how we do our operations at City Hall relative to customer service, water and sewer. That is $100,000 plus expense and you have to have computers. Some of about five workstations that currently are using the old mainframe green screen operating system will not be able to accommodate any sort of software. And matter of fact, if we do not at least accommodate some of those work sessions being replaced, Microsoft, as the operating system, will no longer be supporting the version of that operating system on the computers anyway. So even if we were not doing an upgrade to our software, just to do day-to-day business operations, we have to spend in excess of about $10,000 to $20,000 to upgrade these workstations because there had not been a placement plan put in place. So that's the general fund. I'll pause for a moment just to see if I have any questions specifically about any of the departments or any additional highlights.
Brandon, is there any update on the governor's, again, we could, might be more appropriate to talk about this at the end, but several weeks ago, I was expecting an announcement from the governor, because I know, as far as I know, it hasn't happened yet. For somebody who cares, dollars that may be coming far away, there's nothing, no update?
I have not seen anything. I looked, I printed out some GMA stuff to see if there was anything maybe that was reflecting. I don't think, I don't think it has.
It is, I checked GMA myself today and it is sort of a quiet subject right now. They're not saying anything. So I don't know if they're waiting for legislature to leave tomorrow, final adoption of the budget, state budget tomorrow or what, but possibly we could hear something after tomorrow.
And with that, I don't actually have a whole lot to say about the, some of our enterprise funds. I will hit on a few highlights. Once again, not to be doom and gloom, but we are gonna be pretty conservative in our approach of not really modifying any of these departments, meaning not really going on a rehiring whenever there is some turnover. We all holding steady to make sure that as water and sewer receipts, which have essentially maintained close to what had been budgeted, so I'm not too terribly concerned about that particular revenue. Matter of fact, Mr. Hall, through the appointment of Director of Water, Waste and Water Department, has done a good job in monitoring some of the expense relating to overtime. That has assisted us in making sure that we're helping to control some of the personnel costs. That is always in any organization, kind of that variable that is just unknown because if you have large blowouts or other emergency types, that can cause a significant impact on your budget. I will say that at the water pollution control plant, we are amending up about $20,000 to accommodate for cost of chemicals. Whether that's through the fact that vendors are passing that through to us or just the need to utilize additional chemicals, what we want to do is look at what six months has been spent and then extrapolate that over the additional six months to make sure that as we end the budget year, we're as close to these numbers as possible. So I do want to not mislead y'all, even doing a mid-year budget amendment, you still have to do a final end-of-year budget amendment because you just, six months from now, we don't know what may transpire with revenues or expenditures. The sanitary supplement, that is used, the sanitary sanitation department, that has not, if some of the enacting of increased revenue costs has been beneficial, however, that still has some work that needs to be done. And like I said, with regards to the actual chemicals needed and used in the water plant and wastewater plant, that's the term you can use of the cost of doing business. So did not know if y'all had anything in the water, wastewater. Like I said, that one is pretty well stay in status quo at this moment. We did not see anything in the six months to cause us any significant concern. And even in the midst of a pandemic, you know, people still are seemingly paying their bills and it's resulted in us not having to do disconnects and whatnot. So if you have any questions about that.
I will say that the administrative committee did need the staff on this budget amendment last week. And I thank them for their work on it with the advent, possibility of the CARES money and other things that we're looking at. We will probably look at another budget amendment later in the year. A little bit out of line with what we've done in the past, but I think it's a good idea that we look at it this regularly, particularly when we're looking at pandemics and just strange times.
And I would be remiss if I didn't use the opportunity to just personally thank Sharon, who is Zooming with us this evening. Although as we began the year, I did not know what to expect by way of her commitment as the interim position, but I'm very blessed and thankful that she was able to come in and partner with Lindsay to really get us through final budget amendment for 2019, a full audit, and now presenting this 2020 year amendment. I could not be more thankful and blessed for that. I'd just like to thank Sharon for her commitment.
And we all do that too. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you very much.
Especially like to say thank you, Sharon.
And Lindsay, you've done a great job as well. We want to thank you for all the hard work you put into this as well.
Thank you, Lindsay.
I wish I could say longer.
Remember, I told you, Monsieur, one day you'll want to move to this wonderful city called Jasper.
Okay, Brandon, have anything else on that tip or item A?
That's it. And just between now and the 13th, if there's any questions, comments, concerns, I'd love to hear from you. That way, when we present this for y'all for consideration and approval, we'll have it in order.
Thank you, sir. On behalf of me, discussing of debt bond refunding or refinancing for the person who might not be accountants for our GFA loans. Brandon, if you will bring this forward to us.
Yes, sir. And bear with me just a moment as I pull up. Share with you a little bit of information. One more, please. I hopefully was able to, a very complex issue, and try to at least put it in terms that I understand. Sharon and Lindsay have humored me throughout the process, at least helped verify that some of the information or the information I'm about to share with you, I didn't simplify it too much. Remember, we did engage the services of Raymond James, specifically an employee of Raymond James' Tom Owens, to assist us in evaluating seven of our GFA loans. In light of some attractive interest rates, we thought it would be prudent to engage a bond consultant and then legal counsel to give us some insight into what it would look like if we essentially refinanced some of our loans. So for most folks who have ever owned a home and refinanced their home to achieve a lower interest rate or to refinance their home and to pull out some sort of cash to help with home improvements and to maintain their same monthly payment, this is essentially what we're doing on a larger scale or at least identifying as an option. So as you can see, hopefully on the screen, I've broken it into three options. There's always an option to do nothing, which means that each year, we budget for these payments and we just continue doing that with no problem. We just keep doing it, we budget it and we move on. Next one is, there are two of the seven loans that do have an attractive interest rates, so we would not be looking at bundling them for some sort of refunding of them. So we're looking at the five GFA loans and at a conservative two and a quarter percent combined with the two GFA loans not being refunded, you'll notice in option two that the payments are essentially no higher than what was done under option one. So what we're looking at is saying, we could be spending a little over $5 million until 2035, if we did nothing or if we refund it and then have a graduated scale down of payments over a few years, we would achieve some savings. Option three is a refunding and you'll notice, and I'll get to a comparison at the very end, you'll notice that although this number is higher, the law of laws is basically a cash out. So if you have a HELOC, a home equity line of credit, or you refinance your home to get a better interest rate and pull out some cash to do some home improvements, well, we have a multimillion-dollar water infrastructure that needs to have some improvements to be done. You've all required the staff to move forward some Myrtle Street improvements. There are other improvements about the community we need to identify and work on. We have nine elevated tanks that we need to make sure we're in compliance with standards of repair, maintenance and painting. The last tank we did last year was over $100,000. So it's pretty significant cost for our system and this essentially means that if you compare options one, two and three, you'll notice that the payment goes down in 2027, except in 2027 on option three, it stays the same. So you're getting over half a million plus dollars in cash assets in order to go ahead and reinvest into your system and you're leveling the payments out over a series of additional years because theoretically, this option and this option is only as viable as you do not take out any additional loans for infrastructure improvement, which I can tell you from an operational standpoint, I do not see us not needing some sort of capital investment in our system in 2027. We will need to take out a loan to utilize cash to get some stuff done. So this is kind of a viable option to leveling your payments, so that way you know from a budgetary standpoint that you're never going to exceed what your current payment was and just maintain that over time. And it is worth pointing out that you will achieve some level of reduction in future years, even on the leveling of the payment. So with that, I've taken numerous pages of spreadsheet, tried to synopsize it into a one-page document that helps me understand, but I'll be more than happy to entertain any questions or discussions. This is another item that staff is not looking for an approval, but in talking with the administrative committee, we would be seeking to make sure, while we want us to continue down this path of exploration in preparation and anticipation of the July 13th meeting.
Son, can you hear me? Go ahead.
So really, it looks like, just on a quick pass, if we're gonna get about $700,000 cash out, is that right?
Yes, sir. I always go low and say five to six thousand.
699, 292 is the cash we're getting out?
Yes, sir.
So that's really pretty close to either one of these or within 10 to 20, 30,000. If you just take the money and add it to either one of these, you get pretty close to the total that we're gonna pay here. Correct?
Yes, sir. And what staff looks at is saying, if we achieve a lower interest rate and we can lower our payment to make sure that it does not increase, but we can get some cash out to reinvest in the system, that's a win for the city and the community.
I think historically, we've been worried about going into debt, like unless we needed something. This is a little bit of philosophical change that I think gives us, based on our previous budget discussions, gives us a little breathing room to, despite our budget challenges, we continue to work on our infrastructure and/or do other things that we need to do to keep the momentum or regain the momentum. So seems reasonable.
And don't, you need to recognize the interest rate...
And don't, you need to recognize the interest rate is very attractive.
And if council is desirous of us just continuing to explore this, because once again, this would involve a lot of work. But I wanted it to this point so that legal and bond folks can continue moving forward. And what they will in essence do is have us a term sheet of what attractive rate and terms would be. And what they committed to doing is saying, we know what your payments are every month. If you do nothing, you have to budget this until 2035. So we're going to present you with options that would enable you to keep that and pull some cash out. And our goal would be to continue to explore it. And if it makes sense financially, and we'll talk about the next item in a moment, if it makes sense financially to move forward with a bond resolution in July and do the refunding, then we could at least be in a position to do that.
This is why we hired you, Brandon, and we're glad you're here. Because this is the, I always talk about the experience and education, you know, these are the kind of tools that in the old, in the past, at least in my short tenure, nothing like this was ever presented to us.
And I will, I will give Sharon and Lindsay credit for helping me with this.
Absolutely.
We've used this firm, they trusted us to continue the relationship with Raymond James. So very, very thankful for the toll team. But thank you all for your trust too. And like I said, it has to make sense before we pull the trigger. So be mindful that if interest rates go up, if interest rates go down, we would present you with that at the 13th meeting for the final decision. And hopefully it can work out really good.
And the timing is good. I mean, in the midst of a pandemic and looking at the potential of keeping everything the same and having a little extra money to do what we don't know what with, sounds pretty comforting.
Cool. Well, thank you all.
And moving on to item C, we have consideration and approval of seven GFA deferred modification promissory notes. David Seifert will bring this to us.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of your package, there should be seven, seven cover letters and then seven modification promissory notes, seven resolutions for the city council, and then an opinion letter by myself regarding all this. And basically, what all these documents were doing, Brandon had talked about the refunding, the refinancing of the seven GFA loans that we have outstanding. What GFA is currently doing is they're recognizing that due to the pandemic, that revenues in the enterprise fund may be lower or delayed. So what these deferral agreements do, what these modifications of the promissory notes do is it gives the city for each of the seven notes that we have with GFA, an interest free period beginning July 1st of this year, going through December 31st, the end of the year. For that six-month period, we don't accrue any interest and we don't have to make any interest payment or any principal payment. So it's just extending the promissory note by six months. But for the next six months, we don't have to make an interest payment or a principal payment. And that would allow us an additional six months of revenues coming in to the enterprise fund in order to make our note payments. So in reading all this, I didn't see a downside to the city doing it because you, in effect, are getting a six-month interest-free loan by GFA. And that would give us additional six months to accrue water and sewer revenues. Even if they're down, it's giving you six more months in order to be able to make your interest and principal payments. So this is a good thing by GFA and they're doing it statewide. And like I said, it puts off, you still have to make the payments, but it puts them off for six months. And that gives you a little bit more time to have water and sewer revenues come in and hopefully at some point go back to normal. But it just is going to be helpful to the city in meeting these promissory note obligations. So there is a resolution of the governing body for each of the seven promissory notes we currently have with GFA. And so we need a motion to approve those seven resolutions of city council that would allow the deferral of the payments in accordance with the modification of the promissory note and just authorize the mayor and Brandon as the interim clerk to sign these documents to give us this interest-free period. So let me stop there and see if y'all got any questions. But it's pretty straightforward. You just get an interest-free time period for each of the seven loans that you have with GFA. And that just gives you a little bit more time to have your water and sewer revenues kick back up to normal, hopefully. And but let me see if I've got any questions and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
So counsel, any questions?
If there are no questions, then we just need a motion to approve the seven resolutions allowing for the GFA deferrals and authorizing the mayor and Brandon to sign the resolutions on behalf of the city council and sign the modification of the promissory notes.
I so moved. Second. We have a motion and a second to do exactly what our city attorney said, these seven GFA loans. Is there any further discussion on this? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed, same. Motion carries. Item D is-
Good work finding this, gang.
I beg your pardon?
Good work finding this.
Thank you. Item D is a consideration and approval of legal services agreement, bond counsel and city attorney. So attorney Seifert, we will let you bring this to us also.
Yes, in your package should be a legal services agreement regarding the refunding of the five GFA loans that Brandon had just discussed. And basically, this is to hire myself and bond counsel to handle the refunding of those GFA loans. It's looking like in the discussions with Raymond James and bond counsel, that in order to meet the legal requirements, we're going to have to do a bond issuance. So we need to hire bond counsel and need to approve the legal services agreement for that. It hires both bond counsel and myself to handle the refunding that's set out within the legal services agreement and also for the bond issuance. It's the first one. And then there's the second one. You'll recall that recently, the city got the good news that USDA was going to provide a low-interest loan and a grant for about seven million dollars in improvements in an expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. And so there's the second legal services agreement covering that word. USDA requires having a legal services, written legal services agreement regarding the project. So since we're going to be working on that in the coming months and however long it takes, we need to go ahead and get that legal services agreement in place. So we have two legal services agreements there for your approval. And I'll be glad to take any questions on either one. If y'all want to study the documents and then approve them come July 13th, we can do that too. Just whatever counsel wants to do. I would say regarding the refunding of the five loans with GFA, you know, right now, depending on where the council wants to go, we were looking at having the meeting of July 13th being where the council formally approves the bond process for that refunding of the GFA loans. So it would be kind of helpful to at least approve that agreement tonight. But the USDA, if y'all want to study it, can wait until July 13th. There's no issue. I don't see a time crunch like with the other one. But so we have those two legal services agreements and I'll be glad to answer any questions that anybody has.
Well, counsel, what is your pleasure on these two legal service agreements?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve both exactly as presented to counsel.
A motion to approve both as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve both of these legal service agreements. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Item E is a consideration and approval of resolution number 2020-03 as it pertains to the reimbursement of the city of Jasper in regards to the capital expenditures with the design, construction and installation of the wastewater treatment plant expansion and related improvements with the USDA loan grant. And David, I think this is what you had told us previously that we would need to do to proceed.
Well, this is part of it. What happens is you will first get the interim loan to carry out constructions. And then the USDA comes in at the end of that interim loan and basically pays that interim lender off and provides the permanent financing plus the grant. Part of the issue that you sort of run into is that to get to the point that you can get the interim loan to the point that can get your permanent financing from USDA, typically the engineer has to do a lot of work, has to do a development plan, has to go ahead and submit that development plan to ECD. Then what ends up happening is the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, sort of from a cash flow viewpoint, will put upfront that money to pay the engineer, mostly the engineer, to do that work to secure the loan from the interim financing and also meet the requirements of USDA. So what this reimbursement resolution does, it allows the city from the loan proceeds for both the interim financing and the permanent financing to reimburse the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for that upfront money paid by the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund to do this project. And that helps keep your Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund in the black, so to speak, in that it allows you to not, in effect, lose those typical monthly revenues that the fund generates in the expansion of the plant and just helps keep that funding on a good solid basis. So this is just a resolution to authorize basically the reimbursement of those upfront monies paid by the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for the sewer plant expansion project. And it allows for reimbursement from both the interim financing and the permanent finance.
Counsel, I have a motion to approve the resolution number 2020-03 and save our money.
Motion to approve resolution number 2020-03 as presented to counsel.
And a second. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented to counsel. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Counsel, I need a motion to enter into executive session.
Make a motion-
Purposings of personnel and legal.
Make a motion, remove into executive session to discuss legal matters.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Will we be coming back into this meeting?
We wouldn't have to come back.
Yes, sir. And just for the council and for the public, going into the executive session for personnel and legal, as we've done the last couple of Zoom meetings, it will continue to exist in terms of the recording. I will be asking each of the elected to mute and turn the video off, the feature. I will be reaching out to them via telephone for discussion if there is some sort of action needed, Mr. Mayor, each time that can be done. If there is some sort of action needed, Mr. Mayor, at this time that can be done. But for the general public, we will continue to keep it live. I'd ask the elected to just go mute and-
Okay. Counsel, I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same. Motion carries. And at this time, I would entertain a motion from you council that we approve the hiring of Beverly Ractlin as finance director and city clerk.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Beverly Ractlin as our finance director and city clerk. Is there any further discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same. And the motion carries. And one of my favorite motions of all is the motion to adjourn, so I would entertain a motion that we adjourn at this time.
So moved.
And a second. And for those who had to wait, our apologies for that. We could not help that at this particular point in time. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, and we are adjourned. Thank you so much for attending.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank y'all. Y'all have a good afternoon.